Okay, we are on?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the May 28th, 2024 Planning Commission for Albemarle County. And I'll just read this, "The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Albemarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albemarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received." Let me establish a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
Mr. Missel?
Here.
Mr. Carazana?
Here.
Ms. Firehawk is not here at this time.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Are there any matters from the public not listed on tonight's agenda that they would like to speak to? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda and ask if any of the commissioners would like to pull items or make a motion to approve the draft meeting minutes from May 14th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? We have the vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Missel?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi, thank you.
Good timing, Commissioner Firehawk. All right, well, with that, we'll move on to the public hearings and we'll begin with SP 2023-21, Flow Hyundai. Could we have the welcome and could we have the staff report, please?
Yes.
Thanks.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Chris Taggart. I'm Senior Planner with the Planning Division of Albemarle County Community Development. Margaret Malaschewski assisted with the review and is here tonight as well. I will be giving the staff's presentation for the special use permit and the associated special exception. As with all SPs, we will need a recommendation to forward to the board. Regarding the special exception, the planning commission is not required to make a recommendation. However, the commission chooses to provide comments on the request, staff will include those in the transmittal summary to the board. I'll address the SP first and the special exception second. Subject property is located on the west side of Route 29 between 2070 and 2150 Seminole Trail. Automobile dealerships are located on both those properties and residential properties are located across Burkmar Drive to the west and across Route 29 to the east. Subject property is currently vacant and mostly wooded. There are a couple of street views that show the existing conditions of the property from Route 29 and Burkmar Drive. The special permit request is for outdoor store, outdoor storage, display, and sales of vehicles in the entrance corridor overlay. I'll refer to this as outdoor spray in this presentation. The plan shows spaces for outdoor display in blue and yellow shading, and the yellow shaded spaces are also identified for vehicles waiting repair. Motive vehicle sales is a by right use in the zoning district, but outdoor display is a special use. SPs for outdoor display are reviewed under Section 30.6. That limits the factors to be considered to determining whether the outdoor display is consistent with entrance corridor design guidelines. The ARB applied those guidelines in his review of this request in February of this year. ARB voted no objection to the SP request with revisions to the concept plan that can be resolved during the final site plan review and with conditions of approval that are standard for this type of request. The conditions are listed here and we can bring them back up if needed. The favorable factor for this request is outdoor display use would be consistent with the EC design guidelines if the ARBs recommending conditions are upheld. For this reason, staff recommends approval to special permit for outdoor display with those conditions. Associated with SP request is a request for exception from the supplementary regulation 5.31b. That regulation requires vehicles waiting repair be located where they're not visible from any public street or any residential property. Vehicles waiting repair opposed to the yellow highlighted space list totaling 248 spaces. As currently proposed, most of these spaces are visible from both public streets and residential properties. One reason there is so much visibility of those spaces is that Burkmar Drive is elevated between two and 28 feet above them. From Burkmar Drive, use of vehicles waiting repair would be available south of the building into the parking lot would open view at the entrance to the site. From Route 29, views would be available to these spaces from a distance at the site entrance. Victorian Heights, which is highlighted in orange on the map, is a residential development currently under construction across Burkmar Drive to the west. Units within this development would be elevated between 15 and 64 feet above where the areas awaiting vehicles waiting repair would be located, allowing views into most of these areas. There has been no previous request for exceptions for the requirement for screening vehicles waiting repair. However, there are many examples of screening vehicles waiting repair through the SP and site plan review processes. In these instances, visibility has been eliminated by positioning the spaces so that building, topography, fencing, landscaping, or a combination of these features screen the vehicles from public streets and residential properties. We acknowledge that the types of vehicles waiting repair in the site will have little visual difference between display vehicles and that the topography makes meeting the visibility requirement challenge. However, the ordinance is clear and the site layout could do more to relegate parking and reduce visibility, including positioning vehicle repair building near Burkmar Drive so that provides greater screening, limiting parking areas to locations behind the buildings, and providing additional landscaping, including evergreens along Burkmar Drive and at the perimeter interior of the parking areas. Because methods for screening are available but have not been used to a sufficient degree to minimize impact, staff cannot recommend approval of special exception requests. Once again, the planning commission is not required to make a recommendation on special exception. However, the commission chooses to provide comments on the requests. They'll be included in the transmittal summary to the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions and I can bring up motions and conditions of approval when the commission is ready.
Excellent staff report. Thank you. We'll open it up to questions from the commission. Commissioner Moore, we'll start down at your end.
A question is about the water runoff, stormwater runoff in particular, and just wondering if at this phase or a future phase is when conversations happen about how stormwater is going to run off of the impermeable surfaces that will be built here?
I believe engineering would be reviewing that during the final site plan review.
Okay. I want to just start, since this is the opportunity to bring it up from this body, I want to just mention that this has been a real issue of concern for a whole bunch of neighborhoods in the Rio area as more and more things get paved over on that side of 29. And it looks like there's an option in the stormwater drainage sort of infrastructure we've got where there's some pipes that could take it straight to the Ravanna or a channel that could take it kind of under 29 and then pass the Woodbrook neighborhood. The latter would be not preferable because we're already getting some pretty serious flooding issues over there.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. I think this might be for the applicant, but I will ask it here. So on page three of the staff report, you have outdoor storage displays in sort of a robin egg glue, which if I'm understanding, that would mean that only cars or sort of customer cars or folks like that could park in that area. And I'm wondering if a customer's car or somebody wanted to go pick up their car or leave it there and go have lunch or do whatever they do on Route 29 nowadays, would they be prohibited in the yellow spot which is around the garage area? Which is yellow, which says it's awaiting, the vehicles are only there for awaiting repair as opposed to the Aqua spot allows people who are, or would be available for customers. Oh, no. The customer spot would only be allowed in the purple, in the purple area. So is there a customer parking in the back also? And if not, I would recommend there be customer parking in the back. But you can also say that you think the applicant should be able to answer that. That's fine. I'm okay with that. I'm bringing it up now because it just didn't make any sense to me that all customer parking is relegated to the front of the property when many people will be going to the back of it and there should be somewhere for people who are customers to park back there. When do you want us to ask questions about the exception after this?
No, I think during this.
Yeah. So I'm not opposed to the exception because right next door to it is their sister dealership. I think this is Malloy's. This is not, this is the ever-growing flow. So right next to it is a Ford dealership. Right next to that is, I think, the former Price Chevrolet, which was Chevrolet Hyundai. And so I don't understand why this particular car lot is being subjected to what is not being appreciated, is that this exception is not being appreciated when all the car lots around them, you can see cars from Burkmar Drive. And I think, and if we go further up to where the Putt Putt used to be in the, I don't know, I think it's a dermatological place right now. And it was, I think Harvest Moon is over there. While you may not see cars being worked on, which I don't think you'd see the cars being worked down here, there is a gigantic parking lot of people hanging out, not hanging out, but with cars parked there. So this doesn't feel any different than anything that's around it, I should also say. And then with the back end of Better Living now, the entrance to Better Living being from Burkmar Drive, there's again industrial, sort of light industrial activity going on on the east side of Burkmar Drive that I would not be supportive of them being exempted from this or not being able to do what everybody else is doing. Yes, I think we having the appropriate amount of, what is the word, screening to the extent that that's possible, but not a prohibition type.
Thank you. Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could provide a little bit more detail on what kind of screening would make this acceptable from staff's perspective?
The first suggestion was one that would suggest rotating the vehicle repair building here. So it probably is kind of more screening along the frontage versus just the end of the building. Second recommendation is limiting the parking areas to locations behind the building shown through the site. And then the last kind of suggestion was providing additional landscaping along Burkmar Drive and the perimeter and additional landscaping in the interior, right, greater screening, kind of tri-fold suggestions.
Thanks. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Great presentation. No further questions for staff.
Question for staff. No. Great. I just have one quick question. One is under the special use permit recommended actions. There's number four and number five that are both directly from the ARB reports, the letter. And there are other recommendations in addition to those. Is there a reason that the other recommendations were not included in the conditions or recommended actions? The two that are in the special use permit are landscape plan and lighting plan. Then if you look at their letter, it talks about freestanding poles, either dark brown or bronze or black. Complete landscape plan, revise the parking schedule to match the number of spaces shown on the site plan, standard plant health note, any of those? Is there a reason we don't have those on the recommended actions?
Good evening, everyone. Margaret Malaschewski with the Planning Division. I think the difference is that there might have been more detail in the ARB action letter. Some of those things would fall under the, within the landscape plan condition and within the lighting plan condition and others that don't, may not be directly related to the SP but would be handled with the final site plan.
Okay, got it, got it. That makes sense. Okay, so we didn't miss any, in other words. Got it. All right, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing and call for the applicant's report. And I think you know the drill. You have 10 minutes present, and when it goes yellow, you have a minute left.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Chair Missel, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with Shimp Engineering. I'm here tonight representing the property owner and applicant, Flow 2110 Seminole LLC. Also here with me tonight is Justin Shimp, the project engineer. So both of us are available for any questions you might have once the opportunity comes up for that. Could I, I have my slides up here. Could I get them projected up there?
Drag, I think.
Drag. This, I need to get this new one all figured out. Hold on. I was, this new system, I haven't quite, there we go. I always forget the drag or the new system. Thank you. All right, there we go. Sorry about that. All right, so thank you for the staff report and presentation, Chris. So as Chris noted, this is a request for outdoor sales, storage, and display within an entrance corridor to permit the outdoor sales, storage, and display of vehicles. Also concurrent with this request, we have pursued a special exception request that relates to the visibility of vehicles awaiting repair. And so I have a few slides to speak to that tonight as well. So this is the nearly six-acre site located with frontage on Route 29. So this is the entrance corridor and the reason that we're before you tonight with this request. Back here, Burkmar Drive, and then automobile dealerships on either side, Malloy Ford and Malloy Chevrolet. This is just the view from 29. So currently, it's a vacant wooded site. This is the view looking south towards Malloy Ford and the view looking north towards Malloy Chevrolet. So going into our concept plan, we're proposing three structures as part of this automobile dealership development with affiliated outdoor sales, storage, and display areas. Speaking to, just commenting on Commissioner Bivens' question about the customer parking being up towards the vehicle repair area, point well taken, and we're happy to clarify that. I think we also just imagine that in that area, it would largely be customers who have dropped off their car for repair, and so then therefore would fall under the vehicles awaiting repair requirement. But we can definitely, if that needs to be further clarified, to allow for some additional parking up there, happy to do so. The reason that we broke up the uses this way, so the front part of the site is dedicated to the outdoor storage and display, and then we wanted to permit the greatest flexibility possible here in the colors shown in yellow. And so we've designated that as both areas for outdoor storage and display and vehicles awaiting repair. And the reason for that is because the demand fluctuates. The auto dealerships, they get cars in, they need places to park them in display spaces. Sometimes there's greater demand for vehicle repair. And so really, the reason for the large yellow area is just to permit the maximum flexibility possible for vehicles for sale or vehicles awaiting for repair. And I'll get to this a little bit later in the presentation, but in a lot of cases, it's really difficult to discern vehicles awaiting repair compared to vehicles for sale. Really, the only way you can tell is whether or not the vehicle has license plates on it. I have a picture of that a little later on. So focusing on the special exception here, you can kind of see the, in this image, the grade drop from Burkmar, and this is the Victorian Heights residential construction. As the grade drops from this high point, the water tower is right near this property. And so this is, this is one of the highest points in this area. So what we're focusing on with this special exception is really the word visible. It is nearly impossible, if not impossible, to eliminate visibility from every public right-of-way and from every residential property, especially with this development of Victorian Heights. And so that is why we are proposing, that's why we are requesting the exception because there are going to be places where the vehicles awaiting repair will be visible. And this is just the view from, this is Woodburn Road. We're looking over the Victorian Heights construction right now. So we're basically at the highest point, right near the water tower, and we're looking over the site. And this taller tree area is the highest point of the site, right adjacent to Burkmar. So we updated our section that we included in the application to also include the grading for the Victorian Heights development. This portion of the property of the Victorian Heights development is designated for multifamily dwellings, and they are permitted to be a maximum of 60 feet in height and a maximum of four stories. The finished floor elevation of those residential units is at 534. So coming up from a 510 elevation of Burkmar Drive, we're going up a fairly steep slope. And then we have, you know, a fairly large building at the top of that hill, which is going to have some type of vista entirely across this property. So the elimination of visibility, even if we were to plant some trees on Burkmar, would be impossible, especially from some of the higher units or taller units proposed as part of the Victorian Heights development. And so here you can just kind of see the kind of, you know, 40-foot grade drop that we have across our site from Burkmar down to Route 29. And so about the vehicles awaiting repair and not being able to really discern the difference, one item that I just really wanted to clarify is that this is not a body shop. A body shop is a separate special use permit. And so all of the vehicles awaiting repair are at the shop for routine maintenance parts. They are not getting body work done. And here is a photo of another Flow site in Albemarle County where in this picture, there is both vehicles awaiting repair and vehicles for sale. And the license plate is really the only way that you can discern the difference between the vehicles. All the vehicles awaiting repair really look in perfect condition and it's difficult to tell the difference. So that is all that I have for you this evening, and I am available for any questions that you might have. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission? I'll start with Ms. Firehawk.
Thank you, Ms. Schlein. You talked about the fact that the building, the residential structure is being erected across the street would, you know, undoubtedly be able to look down on them and you couldn't screen it from that. But I guess the question is, isn't the site also, isn't the ordinance intended to also screen just from people driving by? And do you think that's also not an issue or it's immaterial? Maybe you could elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. I think there will be. So what I will say is, as far as additional screening measures along Burkmar, we're amenable to that. That's, you know, especially with the multi-use path going across there, if that's going to enhance the pedestrian experience, we'll be happy to add some more screening. I think from 29, just given that the grade is going up, I think on certain vistas on 29, you're going to, you know, be able to see vehicles on the lot in some areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carazana?
Thank you. Actually, that was the point to bring up. But there was an aerial that you had. Could you give that one? So to the point that Ms. Firehawk was bringing, if you look at your neighboring properties, they both have screening from the street. So you have this buffer that while we agree you're not going to prevent people on the third, fourth floor, maybe even second floor, to look down into the parking lot. The street view is also part of how the ordinance is written and what it's trying to achieve. So it seems like you already have some context there that you can bring into your site or maybe even keep some of the trees that are there, I'm not sure, along the street edge. So we would certainly encourage you to do that at a minimum.
Certainly, and we're definitely open to adding some screening. I think the difference with these two sites is that they were cut down much more than we're really stepping this development into the grade as we work up. And there is kind of an existing berm in this area. So, but we can certainly plant more landscaping and look at these. These are a somewhat different condition just because they totally cut the grade down to achieve these sites here.
Thanks. Commissioner Claiborne?
Sure, thank you. I guess my first question was around mitigation versus elimination, which we've been talking about the first two commissioners here. Could you respond to Mr. Taggart's suggestion about rotating the building? I was just curious, what was the design team's answer to that proposal?
Sure. So the long skinny building here is really because the vehicle's awaiting repair. And again, this is just conceptual. And so some of the pavement isn't shown perfectly. But the long skinny building enables us to fit more bays. And then, and so that's really, this orientation permits us to maximize the number of bays that we can have in the repair shop.
Sure. And my next question, it might be for staff, I'm not sure about, I'll try it. Is there a difference in, I know, body shop versus a vehicle maintenance garage, kind of what you're showing here? Is there a difference in the code or the governing documents?
Yes. That's, yep. As far as the permitted uses, they're different permitted uses.
And what's that?
Different.
So for a vehicle maintenance shop versus body?
Are you referring to the special exception, the definition, because the special exception includes body shops and automobile repair shops? That doesn't make a distinction.
Commissioner Claiborne, there's a separate use in the zoning ordinance to speak to public garage. I think that's what you're getting at, is that there's body shop, that's one use, but public garage is a different term, and that's more for mechanical repairs.
Okay. And that is, is that what this is for the sake of this conversation or no?
This is, for this, I mean, for the sake of this, it's where it's for routine maintenance that you would typically go to the dealership for, oil changes, whenever there's manufacturer recall, those types of repairs.
Okay, so I'll just make a comment. Maybe it's for comp plan discussions or whatever it may be, but the things we think about the future of these types of facilities, we talked about it with the Tesla dealership. I'm just wondering how many more times in the future we'll be giving up acres of asphalt just to have cars out there. So when I see this, it reminds me of really is a vehicle maintenance garage with the little side hustle of selling cars up front. I don't want to be derogatory, but that's what it looks like here. And so I'm just curious, as we move into the future, what does that future look like opposed to having 300 cars parked on a sea of asphalt? So nothing for you to do, it's just something for the commission to talk about at a future date. So I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Murray?
Yes. So you've already heard a comment from my colleague about stormwater. It seems like, you know, we've talked about the visibility of the site from the road and from the potential apartments that are going there. It occurs to me that even though our code doesn't really address this, that there is the view from those apartments down onto the tops of the buildings, and there could be a potential opportunity there. You know, if you were to green that roof, then you would provide something that's actually attractive looking down from those apartments. And then you'd also, you know, provide a benefit to your buildings and also you'd get stormwater credit for that. So that would be a really great way to provide a benefit to this space. I know when I was in Stanton at the Jeep dealer getting my new vehicle, one of the things that I was also pleased about was that they had solar panels. So they were also selling electric vehicles, but they could also charge the vehicles that they were selling right there from the tops of their roof. That's another thing that I don't know if you've considered, but that seems to me like that would be an amenity as well. I mean, that's not specifically covered in or...
Right, I'll, um, points, points well taken. We did call out some of our, we did call out our EV charging stations. And so, I mean, I think we're going to see that a lot more. And it's pretty much kind of mandatory for, for new auto dealerships at this point to, to, you know, kind of keep a diversified customer base. And so we have planned for the EV charging stations. And I think the, you know, point about green roofs as we get into the stormwater management and design, which will come with the final engineering, is, is well taken.
Good. Commissioner Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. I would, I would recommend that you, that you spend some time with your clients speaking, thinking about what my colleague here just said. Because this particular manufacturer is actually moving heavy and fast to EVs, vehicles, electric vehicles. And so being able to sort of craft a place, their dealership in that vein, and being able to present that to consumers, I think, might give them a step up. Because the Hyundai, Hyundai and Kia are actually owning that area right now as far as design and thinking forward. So I, I would, I would sort of echo that. So if we can go, oh, good. So how will I get into your, to the, to the Hyundai dealership from 29?
Uh, so we have an direct entrance off of 29 here. Um, this is closest to the Malloy property or to the Malloy Ford dealership. Um, and then we have kind of a, kind of central travelway access through the site all the way to Berkmar Drive.
So there will be two ways to, to, to access the property. Because I was noting on the two other dealerships or the three other dealerships that are in there, there are multiple ways that a, that a, that a client or a tow truck can get a vehicle into the space. So they're, they're not always having to sort of pop down 29. I noticed there is, will there be a, a sort of a, I don't know the right words for that. I'm not a traffic person guy. Will there be a deceleration lane? That, that, that comes there so that you're not having to, to sort of screech your brakes and even though you have an EV, and come on in there?
Yeah, absolutely. So you can kind of see, so we do have a taper, it's very faint here, but we have a taper drawn in here. And, you know, as with any turn lane requirements, if it's required, it's required, and you, you have to build it, and there's, there's, there's no way around it. And yeah, this, this, we're, you know, fortunate to kind of have the two access points, and especially an alternative option to come out on Berkmar. Those two sites on either side have multiple points of access, but they were also commercial sites that were developed 50 years ago. And, and VDOT would, would, would not permit us to have multiple entrances on, on 29 at this point.
Oh, how about that? Okay. So then, then my other question on this is, if we can go to the backstreet, and I just want to clear out something. Someone mentioned, you mentioned that there was going to be a multi, a multimodal pathway along there?
Yes.
On yours, on the eastern side?
Yep, there's a, there's a, is Phase Two funded just yet? I know Phase, Phase One is funded, correct? Or?
We actually have a VDOT-funded project for shared use path running from Sam's Club or the Walmart on the east side coming back to the intersection of Woodbrook.
On the east side, because there is one on the west side. It was already there.
Sidewalk on the west side.
Sorry?
A sidewalk on the west side. This is, this would be a shared use path on the east side.
Okay.
And ultimately, that'll connect all the way to Ryo. Ryo.
Come all the way to Ryo. All right, that's, that's helpful to know, because I'm like, why? Part of my, one of my, one of my pieces is why are we, why are we putting a, a path? Why are we requiring a, an applicant to put a path in when there's nothing east or, or, or west? And why are they the only ones who have to put it in? But thank you, now I understand why you're putting it in.
Yeah, this one will ultimately, Ryo all the way to Hollymead, right? Yeah, that's great.
Oh, go all the way to Hollymead?
Yeah, Ryo, from Ryo Road to Hollymead, be a multi.
So it's the other, so if you go to the, the, the Berkmar Extended, it's the other side of the street now that is a multimodal, as opposed to a sidewalk.
So coming from the Hollywood Town Center right now, along Berkmar Drive, there's a shared use path that runs all the way down Berkmar to just behind the Sam's Club.
Okay.
And this project would take it from there to Woodbrook. Get from Future Phase, from Woodbrook all the way down to Ryo.
Thank you, that's brilliant, thank you. Toby, you're going to figure out a way to put some purple by the repair shop so that you're not out of compliance, and we don't have to set up people complaining that you have cars parking there. And I will say again, that if I look at the Berkmar roadway, well, I think it's important to have some street-level screening opportunities there and sort of dress it up as people are walking up there or riding their bikes there. I don't see how it's, I don't see why it would be reasonable, reasonable for us to expect that something that's 500, got a 500 and some odd foot elevation should never see, should never see vehicles parked in front of it. Since they'll be able to see all the way up to Walmart, and they'll be able to see all the way down to the credit union, and there are often cars, vehicles parked all the way within that area.
Thank you, Commissioner Bivens. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, the first question I had, I kind of brought up with Steph already a little bit about stormwater runoff, particularly just knowing what's been happening in the neighborhoods across 29, as, as more impermeable surfaces happened on that side. Uh, one is if there's, A, any possibilities of permeable surfaces on the, on the construction. That is probably more of a design phase, you know, build phase option. But I'll bring it up now. That's something to consider. But also really, what plans the inner has at this point to think about stormwater? Just because of the way it seems to be on a tiny little ridge there to go either north or south.
Yeah, um, so, you know, as far as impervious surface, you know, that's, that's definitely a possibility. And it's, it's, it's in the realm, it's, it's in the toolkit, right? To, to, to manage stormwater compliance. And so we don't have, you know, we haven't done any formal engineering or really gotten to that point yet. But as far as, you know, all of, all of our analysis and for, for quantity and quality treatment will, will be done if, if this moves forward, and then if we move forward to, to final site engineering.
Okay. Yeah, that is one of those things, just this last weekend with the strong storm, the banks were overflowing behind Woodbrook. With the visibility of cars awaiting repair, was curious if I could imagine myself on the fourth story of, of Victorian Heights and kind of gazing to the east and looking down, maybe glancing at, at Malloy Ford or Malloy Chevy or Route 29. Will, will you be able to see the cars at either of the Malloy's from there? Okay, yeah. And, and so, I mean, I think what I was hearing earlier from my fellow commissioners was, yeah, let's make sure we screen from Berkmar so that people walking, you know, it's like a nice sort of wooded path. But the idea of, of screening with, you know, 150-foot tall trees seems a little impractical. Solar panels on the roof make is a nice idea. Rooftop mural. Nah, I joke, but, uh, panels, panels is a nice idea. That's my question, now I'm just talking. So, yeah, I think the, the idea that, that we would not, it does not bother me that people would see cars there, if they're going to see cars there, there, and there, you know what I mean?
All right, thanks. Uh, I just had a couple of comments slash maybe questions.
Sure.
One is I was, I was a little confused as to why you would not, just out of the gate, say we're going to screen the parking on Berkmar Drive. Is it, is there a particular reason that you chose not to do that?
Well, we still have to meet the requirements of the code. So there's still parking lot screening requirements in, you know, 3279 of the code. Um, and so all of those will be met, and.
Yeah, I just am curious why you didn't show that on your plan here.
We have, we might need, I mean, we might, I don't know if we have exactly every shrub shown. You know, we might need to show some additional shrubs specifically along these spaces right here. But there's, you know, there's, there's the requirement for screening of parking areas in, in the code. And so, anyway, that, that will be part of the requirement.
So you would be willing to modify this plan to show more screening on the Berkmar Drive side? Similar to what you've done on?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, great. And I get the whole orientation of the building. In fact, truth is, if you were to turn that building 90 degrees, you might be looking at the back of a building if you're driving along Berkmar Drive. So that may not be that much better than looking at cars potentially. The other question I guess I had was, or it's, it's more of an observation. If you think about the fact that, I'm guessing based on the grades, that this parking is going to be relatively level but perched higher. And there's a, an opportunity to create, I think, a series of planting islands. You've got one shown already in there. You know, if you could do a couple of those on the interior, which actually is in part of the staff report, then there's a way to, you know, less rely on the perimeter buffer along the road and actually benefit from having layering of landscape. It may be even more interesting to look at. So the last thing I'll mention is that if, assuming we are also going to put forward the recommended comments that staff provided as part of the special exception, which is on page five. Number three says, providing additional landscaping, including evergreens along Berkmar Drive and at the perimeter and interior of the parking areas, which we just talked about. I would ask that we add to that, providing additional and preserving existing landscaping, including evergreens and so on. So Commissioner, I think Commissioner Karazan, you mentioned if there's a way to preserve.
I, I think some of the existing landscaping, especially with the construction of the multi-use path and ensuring that the grade is going to be really difficult.
Okay, maybe wherever possible or something to the effect. And actually, if you did it, it may look terrible, and you may have to put new stuff back. I'm trying to figure out a way to save money and not have to put new planting in to achieve the same thing if you've got the ability to use what's there.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, when, when we design sites, we often, you know, try to, if we can get the tree canopy up by preserving existing trees, then absolutely we're going to do that, I think, on this particular site. And also just given how the multi-use path is going to come in.
Sure.
Where we're going to have a lot of trouble preserving any existing. But I mean, I think as far as, you know, adding additional landscaping and enhancing that, we're totally on board with doing that and making that happen along Berkmar.
Cool, thank you. That's great. Any other questions from the Commission? All right, uh, thank you. Appreciate it. I'll open it up to comments from the public. Is there anyone attending this evening who would like to speak to this issue? None, we'll check and see, is there anyone online?
No.
No? All right, well, I don't think you have anything to respond to, but I'll offer the opportunity to do that if you'd like. All right, great. Thanks. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the Commission for discussion. Who would like to kick us off?
So I have some comments. You know, I think that the, you know, particularly since there's going to be a public path there along Berkmar. I mean, I think that the quality of that vegetation is important. I mean, I think one could put, one could easily put some really ugly, non-native, you know, thujas out there or, you know, or. But, but really, you know, putting some quality of native landscaping that provides value right along, you know, where your people are going to be walking. Um, I think that that, that's, that's one of the big things I think that would really make this project better.
So Commissioner Murray, would you recommend any changes to page five if we put those forward? I assume that's where you would put those comments.
I'll have to, while everyone else is commenting, I'll look at those.
Awesome.
And I will see if I can.
See if there's any tweakage. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Question?
I would just sort of come along on that and say, well, I can appreciate everyone would like to have a really lovely multi-use path, but you need to look north and south on that road. And I don't know, if you look at the existing buildings which are there, it would be, again, I'm looking at sort of the, you know, my colleague talks about equity. I'm looking at why would you do that to one building, to one, to one site? When, if we look at the, the, the credit union side, it's just got a, going to have a sidewalk in front of it. If you look at the place, the dermatological site, it doesn't, it just has a slope there. And so if what we're suggesting, and if you look at the other, if you look at the real estate place there, if what we're suggesting is that when the county does this project, is there a way for the county to engage with those property owners? So there's some uniform actions, as there's a uniform approach to it, then I think that's actually a very positive thing. But if what we're going to do is sort of say to this particular applicant, no, you've got to do your 200 feet, it's got to be, look like it's, I don't know, like a parkway. But you have the property in front of it, looks like it's just a driveway going into some asphalt, and the property on the other side is going to, so I'm just trying to figure out, how do we bring some, some equal treatment to that area? Instead of, instead of pushing it all on this particular one because they're coming to us here? And if you look at the property, if you look at that road, they're it. Unless, unless somebody buys something and does something.
I just offer a thought on that. I, I think, I get what you're saying, and I'm all about equity. I think what, and maybe it's not true necessarily here, but since, you know, the way we look at each site, right? Every, every site stands on its own, because every site is different. And so in this case, the potential difference in the grades, the height, the visibility, et cetera, might actually cause it to be treated differently than the adjoining parcels that have already been built up, possibly. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I just don't know enough about the final grading and about the setbacks and about how far away that building is going to be from the property line. To me, it's a matter of sort of setting a standard. And then if there are things that need to eat away at that because of the reality of the site, at least we've set the standard to where, where it should be as close to excellence as we can get.
No, I, no, I absolutely appreciate that, but I'm also looking for uniformity. And so, so that we're treating this, we're treating this corridor like, in a like way, whether or not it's this property A or property C.
I like the idea of the, of the county, except, you know, if that's, if that's the string that kind of ties them together, how does that?
So that would be the piece of it, when you go behind Walmart, when you go behind the, the, yes, what is that? That's the Chevrolet dealer, that you would have a common treatment all the way to Berkmar. And I don't know how you do that, given that they've already, they've already developed up to the road. So I'm just, how do you, you know, this whole thing, we've talked about this before. What are the obligations of the last in developer?
Right.
Does, does that one, when no one else is going to be forced to do anything, what are we forcing the last in developer to do? And I don't, you know, I just, I'm always sensitive to that because there's, there are no, there's no way to twist the arms of the people on the other properties.
No, I think it's a good point. I think in this case, technically, there's not a forcing. It's more since it's a special exception, we're not even voting on it. We're at least setting a standard.
Okay.
And then there can be some flexibility within that. But point well taken. Commissioner Moore? Anything? I'm sorry, I guess I was kind of random.
That's okay. Not a whole lot beyond my, my monologue going to our, our guest. Just that in terms of, again, if you can see a lot of cars parked nearby from the fourth floor, you know, adding a few more parked cars does not aesthetically bother me in the same way. You know, again, I think, and I think I saw some of our, our planning staff already take notes about just the water runoff. So I'm just driving, beating that dead horse. But, uh, no, I mean, yeah, that's about all.
Great, thank you. Any other?
I have a question for Steph, actually, and then a comment. So when we recent, this is relevant to this application, but when we recently looked at an application from Home Depot for outdoor storage at the mall, and they had to add in a whole bunch of treeed islands because they were redeveloping the parking lot, and they had to adhere to different standards than when the shopping mall was built. So wouldn't there be a requirement for, doesn't that, does that not also apply here? They're not redeveloping, but they would have to put in the same standards for treeed islands in the parking lot? Or is that only because it was for shopping? I, I'm just trying to understand what might go in the parking lot in terms of landscaping by our, by our requirements.
Or with this site, this kind of overlay of outdoor display? So you're referring to the outdoor display? That was reviewed by the ARB.
Right, but there was all this, there was additional treeed islands within the parking lot that were not to screen the outdoor display per se. I, I'm just trying to understand that if this is like the same, it's park, it's a whole lot of parking.
Right, Margaret Malaschewski again. With the final site plan, all those requirements for standard landscaping in and around the parking areas would apply. And we've been looking at this for a while. I don't remember, I think we did do the calculations. There's, you know, one for every 10 parking spaces. They need an interior parking lot tree, and, and that would, that would apply, just like it did at Home Depot.
Okay, right, okay, that helps. Because it, because it's just a big blob on this drawing. And so it's hard to understand, where would all that stuff go? It's not the, it's not the site plan, yet.
This is a concept plan.
Right, okay. Uh, and, okay, and that, thank you. And then, so my only comment is really more like if wishes were fishes. I, I wish. I, I wish that this development would take advantage of the fact that, first of all, they're replacing a lot of trees with a lot of pavement. And we've already talked about stormwater this evening. And in fact, that's why I recommended denial of a request to double the impervious service of a building at our last hearing. But I, I would love it if this was a site that had permeable pavement, not pavers, but pavement. It would be, it would be the model parking lot that would be the greatest parking lot on all of Route 29. And I would mark it as such, and I would personally shop there because of that. So I'm just saying, there are a lot of green-minded people in this county. And I think that here's a chance to show that you were doing something momentous. This kind of parking can be parked on by pickup trucks, by parked cars. You just can't drive massive delivery vehicles on it like, you know, 18-wheelers and cement trucks. However, you can keep your travel ways as the regular asphalt and the parking areas as permeable. So anyway, just saying, if you wanted to be innovators, there was a lot of movement in Charlottesville to create permeable pavement at the time that one of the limitations was there was not a vacuum truck because it did need to be vacuumed twice a year because sand and grit gets in the pores of the permeable pavement. But they, the city bought a, a vacuum truck. There are other vacuum trucks around. It is not impossible to maintain those. You don't have the freeze thaw in the winter. And so as a result, your parking lots last longer because there's no cracking, because there's no freezing, because all the water goes through. So that was my very short soapbox on permeable pavement. But I'm just looking at the comments about stormwater and looking at this massive amount of change of land cover from treeed. We could do something really momentous with this site and be the standout green dealership.
Thank you.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Just a couple of comments. I think in terms of what our agency is in this, which is really just determining whether the outdoor storage or display and/or sales is consistent with the applicable design guidelines, I'm certainly supportive of that. I will say, unrelated, it breaks my heart to see this greenfield site just become a sea of asphalt for a business model that might make events will be relevant in our lifetime, you know? I have a seven or three-year-old. I doubt they'll even probably buy cars. It's self-driving cars now that already exist. And so to do all of that for 300-part calls, cars on black asphalt pains my heart, but whatever it's worth, kudos to the innovation comment. I would be supportive of that. But yeah, just don't think this business model will exist another decade or so. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody's mic down.
You know, I have to say this. While I would love to believe that we're going to have hydropneur EV take up as quickly as possible, I actually don't believe that's going to happen. I believe we live just far enough for people to remain uncomfortable unless they have 500-mile ranges to them. And so I agree with my colleague. I think that we're, but I think that this is really still going to be a nice community. And that we've got to figure out a way how we sort of approach that in a balanced way. And so I think some of my colleagues' suggestions about want to run, what a runoff, about green roofs, about, about solar panels will in fact help to sort of set the standard for, for car dealerships, I think. And this particular dealership, they're moving quickly to EV, but I don't necessarily know that the market's moving with them.
All right, awesome. Good comments. My only thought on that related to that is if, and I agree with everything that everybody said is let's not lose track of that when we start talking about climate action plans and we start talking about the larger aspects that are more to, I guess, govern is not sure if it's the right word, but govern the county and the development within the county, that those are all things that we should be taking into consideration.
Sure. You asked me if I had any changes to the conditions that we put forth here. And so I do have one change that I think would, would improve this. It's just one word, says landscaping shown on the plan may be required in excess of minimum requirements.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Oh, number, number, so, number, so page five, where it's giving the recommended action.
Get your mic a little closer. She's got to get this.
Sorry. Under the number four, where it says final site approval subject to, this says landscaping shown on the plan may be required to be in excess of the minimum requirements. I would just, I propose that we change the word may to will.
What?
To will.
Will?
So Mr. Chair, I'd remind the commission of something that Commissioner Claiborne brought up, which is that review is limited to determining whether the outdoor storage, display and/or sales is consistent with the applicable design guidelines. As you may know, vehicle sales is a by right use in the highway commercial district. And so again, the, the special use permit is needed for outdoor storage, display and sales. But this body's review is limited to whether it's consistent with the applicable design guidelines. And so I'd caution the commission to make sure that it stays within those design guidelines when specifying any additional conditions.
If I could say, if the concern is about the view from Burke Mar and the extra screening there, that really is associated with the special exception and not the special permit. Those conditions one through five on page five are for the special permit specifically.
The other thing, just to keep in mind, while I, I understand the spirit of your comment is not wanting to limit the flexibility the ARB has to work with the applicant to design what they feel is appropriate. So they may not feel that adding excess landscape, for whatever reason, that we don't know, because we don't have the details, is warranted. But I understand the spirit of your comment.
Well, this, just expanding upon the spirit of it, I think general, some way of, and of course, the, these, these meeting minutes will be captured. But I think that the point being is that it would be nice to see something that goes above and beyond the, the status quo here. And, and it's between them and the ARB as to what that is.
Yep.
Would it be nice to see something that's just a little bit above?
All right. Any other discussion? And if not, would anybody like to make a motion? And if they do make a motion, the only thing, I could do this after in discussion, but I would just suggest that we add, let's see, under the special exception where it says the staff will include our comments in the transmittal summary to the board of supervisors. I would just ask that we add the note on page five, number three, providing additional and where possible, preserving existing landscaping, including evergreens along Burke Mar Drive, et cetera, et cetera. Just, I think that's kind of a given, but just to add that.
I choose to recommend approval, rather, I move to recommend approval of the special use permit. SP 2023 00021 with the conditions laid out in the staff report and also transmitting to the board our comments about landscaping.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. I know this is a detail, but when you said the comments about landscaping, you're, you're talking about all of the comments on page five that include positioning the vehicle repair building, possibly limiting parking spaces. I mean, we know that we've talked through those things, but you're.
I was, when I said our comments about landscaping, I was referring to your excellent summary a moment ago.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Great. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Can somebody send me what that ended up being?
Sure.
That motion?
I can do that.
Okay, Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiburn?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Vivin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I, just a quick point of order with the special exception. I know there's not a, a particular action required, but it sounded like several of us thought, you know, denying that special exception seems a little excess.
Okay, so noted. All right. With that, let us move on to the second public hearing, SP 2024-3, Olivet Preschool Enrollment Increase. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Sid Shof. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division of Albemarle County's Community Development Department. Tonight, we're giving staff's presentation for a special use permit, SP 2024-3, Olivet Preschool Increase Enrollment. This is a special use permit request to amend an existing special use permit to increase the total enrollment from a maximum of 24 students to 48 students. The subject property is approximately 9.19 acres and located west of the city of Charlottesville at 2575 Garth Road. It is owned rural areas and home to the Olivet Presbyterian Church. The comprehensive plan designates it as rural areas. The site has been home to the church since the early 1900s. This site includes a fellowship hall, Sunday and preschool classrooms, a cemetery and other church-related facilities. A special use permit was approved in 2015 for a preschool with a maximum enrollment of 24 students. The surrounding properties are zoned rural areas and consist of single-family residential uses. The applicant's proposing to increase the maximum enrollment from 24 students to 48 students. Additionally, the church is proposing to increase the time of operation from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM to 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM to allow for extended pickup time for students. There are no proposed changes to the site itself, and this drawing shows the current student drop-off flow. Additionally, per the applicant, they have enough classroom capacity to accommodate an increased enrollment to 48 students. Special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the rural areas zoning district and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are two recommended conditions for this application. The first one is amending the previously approved condition from 24 students to 48 students. And the second condition is for hours of operation as requested by the applicant. In sum, there are three factors favorable. The first is consistent with review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. The second is the proposal provides a preschool slash daycare option for community members who live and work in the area. And third, no detrimental impacts to adjoining properties are anticipated. With that being said, staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right. That was probably record time. Thank you. Any questions from the commission on this one?
I just have one. When you were talking with the applicant, obviously, this is my district and we already went through this once. Did you ask them, like, is this, is this it? Like, are you guys coming back for 62 in two years or, because, you know, I wish they would have just done the higher number before.
I think that's an answer the applicant can give you, but I think I spoke with them, they were comfortable with asking for 48 and should be sufficient for the time being.
Okay. I just don't want them to have to come back every 18 months for 12 more and 12 more. It seems silly. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation. If you have one. Don't feel obligated.
Very brief.
Come have a chat.
Good evening. My name is Seth Level. I serve as the pastor and head of staff at Olivet Presbyterian Church. Have been on staff since 2010. I've served as the pastor and head of staff since, for the last four and a half years. We've had a preschool now, as Sid noted, for about 10 years. And we regret not having asked for more enrollment when we did this about 10 years ago. We are back and we hope it is for the final time. We've done an assessment of our building and what we think that the preschool could grow towards. When we began, we began with one classroom, eight students, two teachers. It has grown exponentially. We have a waitlist. And really, the reason we're here tonight is we don't want to have students on a waitlist. We want students that live nearby, families that live nearby to have a pre-K option in the community. But also just add, we're very grateful to sit in the staff. They've been incredibly helpful. It's, yeah, they've made it a smooth process for us.
Great.
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Vivin?
I could understand if we could, oh, can you go sit to the classroom layout? Says Olivet Presbyterian Church School and Preschool Area 2023. So it's, oh, it's in your packet. Thank you.
I should have had a slide.
Let's, so let's just do it. So in your, in your, in your packet, you have four, five class, 004, two, three class, 010, K1 class, 011, and pre-K class, 014, right?
Correct.
And so I'm trying to understand from the narrative, where are all the kids going? Where are these young kids going? Because it says that, and maybe it's just a, maybe it's just a notation and if so, I would just recommend that you change your notation on this when, before you go to the supervisors. Because it, it indicates in, on your page one of the proposal, that there are two two-year classes, two-year-old classes? And that there's one three, one four, and then one pre-K. I don't have enough room for all of those children.
So, so for the two-year-olds, they, just because of age and ability to be in a pre-K setting, they do not meet daily. So those two classes, there's like a, you know, an A class and a B class that meet at different times throughout the week. And we can be more clear with that.
I would recommend that you do that because when I went back to your, to the narrative on your.
Yeah, I can see the confusion.
I'm like, I don't see where all these bodies go over here.
So, right. So in the preschool model, there's only the pre-K is actually there Monday through Friday. Because they're the older kids, five days a week. For the other classes, they're tiered. Some are three-day options, some are two-day options.
I would just recommend you do that because that would add a bit of clarity to it. And then the other question I have, if you, if you're doubling your capacity by 100%, can you, can your playground handle that increased capacity?
We actually just put a brand-new playground in. Yeah.
That's what I needed you to say.
Yeah.
Awesome. Commissioner Claiburn?
Thank you, sir. Quick question about the, the time duration being open. Do you ever foresee in the future being open longer than 2:00 PM for working families? And if so, this would be the time to share that, even if you don't use it tomorrow.
Right. We have explored that possibility of having extended daycare and really feel like that the, yeah, the scope of the mission we're called to is for a true preschool. And that when you move into that full daycare, that you really need to be open until after 5:00 PM. It would completely change the staffing model and the needs that we have. And we are, we have a wonderful preschool committee. They have explored that and just do not foresee that as something that we would consider. The reason we did consider it is because we do want to be a preschool that works for working families. We actually have scholarship funds available. What we have found is just where we are located, we're not getting a lot of, of families that are looking for that specific option.
Yeah, no, thank you. This, this is tough. I, I live the struggle. So unless somebody's staying home, it's hard to pick someone up at one in the afternoon.
I've got three kids myself. I understand. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just had one question. So if you're going from 24 to 48, I'm curious, is the capacity, trying to think of how to ask this question, is the, the permitted capacity for the space now maxed out?
Yes. I mean, that is, so we have those four classrooms and a max of 12 students per classroom.
So occupancy would be maxed out at 48?
Correct.
Got it. Because that's what I've always thought is if we're gonna, I mean, you know, when it was 24, you actually had the ability to have 48 because of the space and because of the, and this is probably before your time, but just having that, just why not go to 48 day one? What's the maximum capacity and just start there? And even if you don't fill it, that's fine, but you have it permitted so that it's available.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. Any questions from the public? I'm sorry, any comments from the public? All right. Seeing none? Any online?
No, sir.
Nope. Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for any comments. No comments? Would anybody care to make a motion?
I would care to.
Great.
Real quick, there's a, I just noticed a typo in the recommended approval. It says SP 2024 with a four at the end. It should be three.
Okay. Denied. I move to recommend approval of S. I move to recommend approval of SP 2024, many zeros, 3, Olivet Preschool Increase Enrollment with Conditions Stated in the Staff Report.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Could we call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Clayburn.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wish you could have had some cute preschoolers to, to provide public comment.
All right. With that, we'll move on to SP 2024-5 Tandem Friends School Enrollment Increase.
Oh, hey, I'm back.
Hey. Been a while. It's good to see you.
Thank you. My name is Sid Schoeff, and I'm a senior planner with the planning division. Tonight I'm giving staff's presentation for a special use permit, SP 2024-5 Tandem Friends School Increase Enrollment. This is a special use permit request to amend an existing special use permit to increase student enrollment from 250 students to 400 students. Subject property is approximately 24.51 acres and located south of the city of Charlottesville at 279 Tandem Lane. It is zoned R1 residential and has been home to the Tandem Friends School since 1972. The comprehensive plan designates it as Neighborhood Density Residential. As mentioned on the last slide, this site has been home to the school since 1972. The site contains multiple buildings and athletic fields associated with the school. There have been nine approved special use permits since 1972, four of which have been related to the, to increasing capacity or enrollment at the school. The last student enrollment increase was approved in 2014 for a maximum enrollment of 250 students. The last special use permit that was approved was in 2020 for an outdoor pavilion. Additionally, a two-story middle school building with a 15,000 square foot, square foot footprint was approved in 2016 and has not been constructed yet. The surrounding properties are mostly institutional areas. Monticello High School is located to the north across Mill Creek Drive. To the west is the Monticello Fire Rescue Station, and then to the south are county school board-owned properties that are zoned R1. These parcels are largely wooded with a single-family home located on one of these properties. I hadn't, oh, this is this slide. Yep. In the greater surrounding area, there are two Albemarle County schools, which includes Monticello High School, Mountain V Elementary School, and then a future elementary school that would be off of Founder's Place. This is the applicant's proposal. It's a request to amend previously approved special use permit, SP 2019-7, to permit an increase in student enrollment from 250 to 400 students. According to the applicant, the current facilities on the site have a capacity for up to 350 students. Once that capacity is met, the applicant will need to construct the approved two-story, 15,000-square-foot footprint middle school building to accommodate additional students to the school, and that's shown as yellow on the screen. There were two factors favorable. The first is it's consistent with review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. The second is the use is consistent with the southern and western neighborhoods master plan. There was one factor unfavorable, and that is the proposed increase in enrollment will generate additional traffic on Avon Street, Mill Creek Drive, and Scottsville Road. Although there will be an increase in the number of trips in the area, it was a minimal addition to the existing trip volumes. The amount of trips that would be generated did not pass a threshold that would warrant additional transportation conditions to offset the impact. There are five total conditions. Three are carryover from the previously approved SP, and condition number three was revised to reflect the change in maximum school enrollment. And then the fifth condition was added to address the traffic impacts to the area, so that student pickup and drop-off times must be staggered by 15 minutes or more with pickup and drop-off times at Monticello High School, which is across the street. Staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions now.
Great. Thank you again. Any questions from the commission? I have one I'll throw out while y'all are thinking, unless you're just, you don't have any? Just a quick question. I'm curious how, you may not know the answer, but how does the addition of 200 students equate to, in terms of traffic generation, trip generation, how does that equate to, say, a single-family home or two townhouses, for example? Like, if you, I mean, I'm just, this is dumb math, but if you were to say, well, four people live in a house on average, it's 50 houses, right? That would, but I don't know if that's equal or not.
Commissioner Missile, Kevin McDermott, I'm the deputy director of planning here in Alamo County. The, we use the ITE Trip Generation Manual to determine, to estimate future trips. Typically, a single-family residence is around eight trips per home, daily trips per home. And, and then if you go down to apartments and, you know, townhomes, apartments, it gets slightly smaller. I think maybe down to around six or so is the, is for a single-family apartment, six, six daily trips. So, so you can imagine that 200 trips would be approximately 15 homes, something like that.
Got it.
And I think that was, it's about 200 additional trips. Is that, do you have that number? Sorry, Sid.
Yeah, it's contained in the staff report. I can find it quickly.
I think it was about 200 additional trips to what we were expecting for this increase.
Got it. Okay. That's helpful perspective. Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. McDermott, before you sit, might as well keep you up there for a little bit. So the intersection of Mill Creek and, and Tandem, which is also the entrance to Monticello, I believe, off of Mills, Mill Creek. What is the current condition of that intersection?
And, well, a little background so that everyone's aware that we did just get a traffic impact analysis from the Southern feeder pattern school. We did not require Tandem to do a traffic impact analysis because their impacts were so small. So looking at that, they did, the Southern feeder pattern did assess the current conditions there, and everything was operating fine during the peak hours in the, during the start and end of the school days. Both Monticello High School and Tandem fund a, a police officer to direct traffic at that intersection. And, and with that, things seem to be operating fine.
So is there a rating for that intersection that you know of?
I've got the Southern feeder pattern assessment right here. And it looks like with the addition of the Southern feeder pattern school and background growth, the 2026 future conditions at that intersection are really all As and Bs for level of service. So at that intersection, it's fine. That doesn't include the addition of the trips for Tandem, but the number's not significant. So I don't think it would really, it would bring it down below, maybe to a C at worst.
Appreciate it.
Chair, may I keep him there for a second?
Please, yeah.
So in the, in the traffic study that you just shared with us, does that take into consideration the exit, which is closer to Route 20?
That, that actually, that exit was not analyzed for the Southern feeder pattern. I, and I may have to look to Sid again for this, but I believe that is only used as an exit.
Yeah, per the applicant, they use that Southern exit in the afternoons for drop-off and pickup time, or pickup.
That's helping to, so that releases pressure from the intersection right across from, from Monticello.
Yes.
I do have a comment.
Yeah, I have a follow-up question to these.
But I'll let you go, sir, because you're the chair.
No, 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 absolutely.
So my concern here is that I was okay, I was on the commission when we voted to put the Phantom Middle School in the location it is now. But I'm no longer good with the decision because blocking, having the school where it is will, will block the circle going to the exit on the other side. Now, maybe there's a way to the site that I believe it is, since they own all that property on that quadrant there. Right now, if they're going to put the, the Phantom Middle School in that, 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 that closes the loop. And I, and I thought I read, when I read Sid's part, I think I read in Sid's report that that is an exit, and certainly when you go up there, when you go into the property, it feels like an exit. And when I've been there for certain things over the years, that was the easiest way to leave the property. If the only way in and out, when the Phantom Middle School is built, is to go in and out the place, the, the part that's right across from Monticello High, I think there's going to be significant traffic. So I would recommend that they continue to hold that circle, the circle, to be able to go out there as opposed to going out on, across from Monticello. Without that, I have a hard time supporting the additional, the additional students, because I think what they're doing then is creating X, 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 is excavating the, the traffic that's going to come out of that if it's a, it's a one in, one way in and a one way out.
Can I ask you a question about that? I'm not sure I'm following. So there's a note in the staff report that refers to the southeast entrance? Is that what you're referring?
Yes, if you look, do you see where, where Sid has, it's got the, the little, the little yellow thing there?
Yeah.
If you look off to like 5 o'clock off of that, 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 off of that rectangle?
Yeah.
That road right there, that's a road that takes you to, to, that takes you to whatever that's, right, it takes you to Middle Creek, the Mill Creek Road. And so what's lovely about that, and you know, we've been, we've been concerned with our public schools about having multiple ways to get kids off of campuses.
Got it. I'm with you.
And so for me, I was fine with it because I've used that exit.
Yes.
And then now, if what you're going to do is put the Phantom Middle School there.
Yes.
And increase census and push everyone out the front way, I have, I, I cannot support that.
I'm with you. Got it. Thank you.
And I say that since they have a lot of land, so they could put the Phantom Middle School someplace else and, and preserve the circle.
Phantom Middle School was approved, though, right?
I know.
Yeah.
But it's never been built.
Yeah, I'm with you.
It's approved, but it's never been built.
I just had one question for staff. This is about, for example, I'm just curious, the, the split, and part of this, I know, is a personal problem for Tandem. If they don't do this, they'll have traffic issues, but the splitting the cost of Monticello to pay a police officer, those kinds of things. There's nothing that is required by the county, right? That's self-imposed.
That's correct.
And, and when we talk about increasing the enrollment to two, to 400, but at 350, a couple of things kick in. One is they need to build that Phantom building. And then there was another one in here. Site plan, another traffic analysis, I think.
Yeah.
How do we track their enrollment? I mean, is that self-reported or? Other words, they get to 350 and they give us a call and say, county, by the way?
I believe that's taken care of with zoning and they get the appropriate zoning clearances. But yeah, you're correct. So once they hit 350 students, they would be at capacity with the current buildings on the site.
Yeah.
As he referenced to the, the Phantom Middle School, that was approved with a special use permit before. They need to submit another site plan to actually construct that. So
Yeah.
There is a possibility, if they do submit another site plan for this middle school, there could be reconfiguration of that road potentially. We'd, staff would need to look more into the, the conditions and how that would look, but
Okay.
there could be a potential scenario there.
Thank you. I can ask the applicant too. Great. Any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you both. We'll open it up to the applicant for their. You know the drill. 10 minutes, one-minute warning. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kendra Moon, and I'm here on behalf of Tandem Friends School. I've got three of the school administrators joining me tonight, so they're available for questions as needed. I'll probably breeze through some of the background that Sid has already covered and spend some more time on the traffic portion, since I think that'll be most of the topic of conversation this afternoon. So Tandem Friends School was established in 1970. They're an independent day school, serving grades five through 12. Their current enrollment is exactly at the 250-student limit. They have been extremely diligent to stick with that, to the point where they've turned students away, even in the case of two siblings having to turn one student, one sibling away to stay to that limit. They are, let's see, requesting to amend this special use permit. And as mentioned, there have been four in the past for increased enrollment. And as Karen mentioned earlier with the preschool, what we're trying to do with this aspirational 400-student limit is not have to come back every few years to ask for a few more students. So we're not expecting 400 students tomorrow. There are about 30 students on the waitlist currently, so that's the initial growth that would be expected. And then the 400 just allows them room to grow. Like, they've already gotten the middle school building location approved with a previous special use permit. So they've gotten sort of an idea of how they would grow, but it's not needed at this time. Their current facilities have room for about 100 more students. There are empty seats in the classroom. All they need is more staff and this special use permit amendment to be approved. So there's a public need for additional capacity in Albemarle Public Schools, especially high schools. So if I'll, on the next slide, I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see. But I want to point out that approximately half of Tandem students currently live within Albemarle, and so would presumably be going to Albemarle County Public Schools. About 90 live within Charlottesville. And approximately 55 students, at least in the past, this is 2023, 2024 school year data, 55 students are zoned for the Southern feeder pattern school district and ultimately Monticello High School. So they would be on this road generating traffic here regardless. So just to zoom in on some of those numbers, Albemarle especially is extremely overcapacity. The red is the number of students that they're overcapacity currently and then projected out for the next 10 years. So Monticello is right on the border, but just to give you an idea. Some of the context Sid covered, this is surrounded by institutional uses. It already, already has a special use permit, has been in existence for a long time. So it's compatible with the surrounding uses and, and everyone's used to the school being there. As Sid mentioned as well, there's, well, two currently and planned for a third school in the vicinity. So the future elementary school location would be just a few properties down. This is their existing site. So two entrances off of Mill Creek. This is the northern entrance I'll be referring to. They've got an administrative building, classroom buildings spread throughout, athletic facilities and parking, and then, you know, future middle school in this vicinity. So the concept plan that was approved with 2015, and so I understand concerns about the access. I, I do want to point out, this was approved to, to close that, that second access, but also Tandem wants to keep it if they can as well. It's a benefit to them. But this, this building, should they ever need it, should they get to that 350-student limit, they will be required to go through the site plan process, erosion incentive control, stormwater. Anticipated impacts, since we're not really proposing an expansion, at any future expansion that would be needed, will go through proper stormwater management. The biggest impact really is traffic. Their current circulation patterns, as mentioned, there's a police officer in the morning and afternoons during the pickup and drop-off times to help control this intersection. Most of the traffic, and, well, all of the traffic enters through this northern entrance, and most of the traffic leaves through this entrance. I think I maybe misunderstood. They do allow cars to exit in the morning and the afternoon, but during the day, this is closed off. They put cones there just so that pedestrians can safely walk through the site and not worry about cars. But, so they have some flexibility in their internal circulation patterns. But so they have some flexibility in their internal circulation patterns. School start and end times. So related to traffic, I think the the pickup and drop off window is about thirty minutes. The school start and end times are already staggered from the schools in the vicinity, but they would keep them that way with the special use permit. So the school starts usually around eight thirty, except for Fridays, but I'll, I'll speak a little more to that. So it's twenty-five minutes staggered in the morning from Monticello High School across the road and then significantly staggered from Mountain View Elementary School off of Avon. And especially in the afternoon, um, they're only ten minutes apart from Monticello High School, but many students stay after school for activities, so it's not as concentrated traffic to the site at that time. And the future elementary school is expected to have the same hours as Mountain View. At least I'm assuming. As Kevin spoke a little bit to, there was a um, traffic impact analysis prepared for this, the new elementary school, and it found that the current intersections in the area were all operating at acceptable levels of service and were projected to remain that way in the future. Trip generation. So I have the table of projected trips from ITE, but I want to point out this is based off of two data points and projected. So it's, it's to be taken with a grain of salt. If you're, if you're plugging in your numbers based off of two data points, it's not going to be super accurate, but I do have actual trip counts from tandem. They have staff members out on site every morning, every afternoon. And Todd, who's here, has counted that he knows everyone that comes through. He knows how many people are coming and going. So about three hundred and eighty-five trips per day currently, as opposed to what's projected currently is six twenty. So this is significantly less than ITE would, would say. Um, and then in the future, we're projecting six hundred and sixteen trips per day. So significantly less than what's shown in ITE. And the traffic impact analysis that was performed corroborates this because their estimate, they had counts at a hundred and sixty peak morning trips as opposed to the two hundred and fourteen estimated. Just to, I looked up the safety of this intersection, uh, crashes in the last eight years. None of them seemed to be directly correlated with the time of pickup and drop off. There's one that could potentially be associated at nine, ten AM. This is, they start school at eight thirty, so it's a bit of a stretch, but just just showing you what I found. Um, and then last slide is a snapshot of the intersection in the morning at peak drop off time. This was taken at like eight twenty-seven AM. So this is peak traffic. Here's the, the policeman flagging the intersection. So this was helpful for myself just to understand like, what does this traffic actually look like? Um, and I actually have a quick video, but I don't know if it'll play. Does it play? Let's see. It's um, okay, so this, I can replay it too. This is five minutes sped up into fifteen seconds. But just to give you an idea of the flow of traffic, like it, it flows pretty well. There's, you know, maybe a, a one minute period where some cars are backed up. And um, so I'll just play it one more time. I have ten seconds left. But this was helpful, you know, for me. I was curious as well. What does this traffic actually look like? So here you go.
Maybe four or five more times.
Yeah. Thank you.
Perfect time. Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant? Before you go away?
I want to know how much they pay that officer.
Not enough.
Good answer. I don't know.
Any questions, Mr. Vins?
I think, I think I understand from Albemarle GIS that the road that comes down that's south, the send, the south enter, exit is not actually on your property, on your client's property. But it's owned by something called the Nameless One. There's a scary, I mean, this, you know, people do sort of odd, odd things in this world, but maybe the Nameless One isn't alone.
Hi, I'm Michelle Sussinger. I'm the Associate Head of Operations from Tandem Friends School, and this is Whitney Thompson, the head of school at Tandem Friends School. It, it's a good question. Um, the property, the exit that comes out that is held by the Nameless Corporation, that is a property that is being held for tandem. If you have the, um, the other map with the parcels on it, tandem also has another property that is adjacent to there on the corner that we also hold and that is part, but there's no roads on the property.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
So on your trip counts, uh, I forget where you had three.
Sixty.
Yeah.
Five. Does, is that just students' traffic to drop off and pick up students? Or are you including your staff in that as well?
Those trip counts include staff and students. Totally, yes.
Thank you.
And before you leave, step away. So do you understand my concern about as your, as your consultant said, it was different when we thought, well, when I thought, because I voted yes for this, that there were two hundred people who were going to be there. Now you're saying you put basically another hundred and fifty on the piece of property. And one of the things that I've become very concerned with about schools recently is having one way in and one way out. Things happen. Unfortunate things happen. And so the many times that I've been to the property for events or for things like that, I was so pleased that you were one of the few schools that had a second way to get out of there in case something went down. And so while I wasn't concerned when it was like a hundred and fifty, I, that's not to say that I don't have a concern for a hundred and fifty souls. But I do become concerned in today's environment. And with an increased census there to, to restrict yourselves unnecessarily since you have land held by the one who shall not be named. Since you have land that allows you to put a road in front of the, the building which has yet to be built. And that's, that is where I'm, I, I'm very concerned about how things have changed since just twenty sixteen when you came, brought this before us.
Would you like me to comment? Um, I think we share that same concern and knowing that we would need to come back to the county and also go through the site plan process again. Likely the shape and the, how that building ultimately would look like, would not look like it would or as it did when it was initially proposed. So that is a concern that we also hold and I, we don't feel like we need to move away from having multiple exits.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, it, yeah, not for the applicant, but I mean, just in general, because this is, couldn't we also require that second entrance? Could we not? It's the, the impact, it's germane to the impact. The impact is the additional students and the additional traffic.
Yeah.
And having an extra, you know, and not, not get involved in how it's laid out, but it seems like it's not impossible to play around with that building.
I mean, it, it could be a condition of approval. I mean, I would note that the current conditions talk about being in general accord with a submitted site plan, so that would need to be altered. As was pointed out, that was approved with a prior SP. But I mean, there, there could be a condition of approval of this SP to um, essentially restrict approval of this SP to uh, uh, requiring an alternate exit. Whether it be on the, on the location of the existing exit or whether
However, they worked it out. Because it does seem like they have some flexibility on the site. They could also go a little taller in their building. I don't know. Anyway. We're not going to sit here and play architect at the dais, but.
Well, we can pose it as a question and ask the applicant to respond if you'd like.
I just want to make sure. You may under, you may know this already, but I want to make sure there's no misunderstanding. There would still be alternative fire access. But you're just talking about general being able to, okay, okay.
Okay.
I think we were trying to uh, honor the idea of not coming back over and over again about little things. And since this had already been approved, we kind of thought the, the kind of concern that you just raised, which we definitely agree with, would get wrapped into that process at that time when we, if we ever do reach three hundred and fifty students, which is not anytime soon. So uh, assuming that concern would be the same, it could be raised during that process. If we don't feel like adding something now, but I, I think it makes, it certainly, I would imagine, would come up in that process regardless um, of if it's included as a stipulation now.
I'm asking questions. It's not, I, thank you for that. On my, my, I'm anticipating that when they come forward for their site, it doesn't come back to us.
I was just gonna make that point.
I'll let you make that point then.
Yeah. Well, you just made it. I think that was, that was, so with the site plan, just so you all know, would not come back to us unless I think staff could call it up to us.
May I add some information? Um, so can we show my screen real quick?
Hit it again.
There we go. So the, the first condition, as Andy was referencing, um, this, this is a carryover from the previously approved SP. Um, development shall be in general accord with the concept plan. And so A through E are uh, major elements that cannot be changed. And so the building size, including height, may not be changed in the location of buildings. So if we were to um, move forward with redesigning that building, they would need to amend this SP. That can be, I don't know if that's appropriate now or later down the line, once they get to three hundred and fifty students, but they would need to amend this SP to um, change the building location.
So I, I run into this as an applicant in the past. So that word general accord, right? Those two words. There's some flexibility in that if they were to determine that that building was in a location that might
Roughly the same.
Cause a problem for their trans, transportation.
Francis McCall, Deputy Zoning Administrator. Uh, you are correct, Mr. Missile. We would have to take that into consideration. If they propose that as far as that minor change, we would take that into consideration and see if that is minor enough. Even with the orientation shown on there, it's still something that could be minor. So we, we have to make that evaluation when they, when they make that proposal. So if that does shift and it opens up the, the ability to keep that entrance there, then, then we could definitely consider that. And if we felt that it didn't, then it would, then it would have to come in for an amendment.
So I'm trying to figure out how to, because we all seem like we're aligned. The question is, how do we make this as simple as possible for you all in the future? So you're not back here saying we decided to move the building twenty feet and for all good reasons, we said, well, that's not generally in accord with your plan. So I'm wondering if there's a way to craft a, I don't know if I'd call it a condition or a, a recommendation that rides with this that then is seen when the site plan comes forward, that reminds staff that, oh, that's right, we agreed that it might be beneficial to slide that building around. And then that gives you sort of that flexibility within that language of general accord to be more flexible.
So one suggestion, and obviously I'm open to uh, suggestions from the um, staff would be to add a condition uh, stipulating that secondary egress onto Mill Creek Drive must be provided, something to that effect. And then it would be up to the, the applicant uh, site review process and so forth to determine where that secondary access might be. Matter of fact, as, as the applicant has pointed out, they own property that all goes down onto Route Twenty Scottsville Road as well. So perhaps, again, depending on, on the site plan process, what VDOT might approve, the secondary access might be onto, onto um, Route Twenty directly. But again, uh, all, all to say that a, a condition stipulating or requiring that means a secondary access uh, will continue to be, must continue to be provided, uh, might be a condition that uh, that the commission and the staff might consider.
And to just, just to be clear, the reason that this is being, that we would be adding this is because we're going from two fifty to four hundred.
Correct.
I mean, it's tied directly to
Directly tied to the request.
Directly tied, tied to that.
Hundred percent. I'm preaching to the choir here. I just want to make sure everybody understands. It's not like we're, because it feels a little awkward to be changing a previously approved special use permit. But we're doing it because of
But we haven't, but
Actually changing that.
We're not changing that. What, what, yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying is if, if someone had come in twenty nineteen and said, we're going to go to four hundred.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Then at that point, I would have said, how are you going to move four hundred people in and out of there in the case of a crisis?
Yep.
So at that time, I don't recall that there was an increase in census at that time. I think it was, you know, there was a conversation, could they have a multi-use um, a multi-use pavilion so that they could do events and things like that, which didn't, which didn't impact
Yeah.
that exit.
That's right.
In fact, made sense to me, given that exit. Now what you're doing is you're shaping the census of that, of that campus. And when you start altering the census of a campus, that I want to be able to preserve
Yeah.
egress and ingress in there in a way that, that is about safety.
And it's not just you. I think everyone agrees.
So that, that's why I raised it. That's why.
Dude, it sounds like there's a, a, maybe an added condition being suggested that I think is widely shared to preserve secondary egress from the property, period.
Yep.
But then I'm wondering too, if we might uh, uh, add some uh, amended comments that could be passed on uh, indicating that the commission considers a modification of twenty feet or so of building envelope to be minor.
So um, oh, I see what you're saying. Right.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking here.
Yeah.
I make a suggestion, please. So one C, location of buildings, maybe a comma that, after that, with the exception of the middle school, which may be moved to promote a secondary access. And just leave it at that.
Yeah, nicely done. Okay, I knew you guys were cooking something up there.
I got, I'll get it. Yeah.
So I've got, I don't think we're proposing that they have to keep that act, that exit, that, so I'm not sure that we need to get into this. What we just say that a second means of egress or exit from the property is required.
Although maybe
Figure it out.
Yeah, although I think if, the, the trick is if, we're kind of in discussion too, but it's okay, we're still asking questions. I guess the question is, if the location of the building, if we say that they need to provide a secondary egress and they go, okay, well, we'll do that. We'll keep the existing egress. Then they try to move their building to adapt to that. This won't let them do it. So that's, this is by adding the language that I think Mr. Barnes recommended. It does provide them with the opportunity to have a second entrance and require a second entrance, but it also allows
I would think it's still within the general, if you move that building twenty feet, it's still within the general court of
It, it probably is, but it makes sure that it's
Exactly. That's all I'm thinking is belt and suspenders. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing as we're good. Okay. Great. Thank you. So with that, I'll see, I'm doubting it, but is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none online?
No.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it back to the
Did, did the applicant wish to uh, use any of their five minutes for any additional comments?
Sorry else. Thank you for the clarification. All right. So discussion. Prime of best year, man. Rules of order, you know, it's all right. Uh, well, I guess we uh, need a motion then. And I know it's in my district, so I'm happy to make the motion.
Yes.
Um, I just want to make sure I get the clarification on the language change that Mr. Barnes recommended.
Would you like me to read it again?
Sure.
A C would be modified to be um, locations of buildings with the exception of the middle school, which may be shifted to allow for secondary means of access.
Okay, that sounds great. So um, check me on this. I moved to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-four dash five. Tandem Friends School increased enrollment with the conditions stated in the staff report and as amended
with, with Item C. With the exception of the middle school, which may be shifted to allow for second means of access.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
As your neighbor district.
All right. No? All right. Could I have the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivin?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. With that, we'll move, I think we are done with our yep, public hearing and we will move to committee reports. Are there any commissioners who would like to provide committee reports?
I would.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Rio twenty-nine Community Advisory Committee met uh, just last Thursday. We'll have one coming down the
Um, we'll have one coming down the pike where, uh, um, Crosslife Church and Community Christian Academy, right there at Old Brook Road in Rio. Uh, they are gonna ask to tear down an old parsonage that's not being used and put in for the time being, a nice looking modular building for a few years. Um, so they can bring back their middle school students to that parcel. Um, eventually, and this is not part of the proposal that we'll get, but eventually they want to, uh, increase their enrollment cap from a hundred and fifty to five hundred. That'll be an interesting discussion down the road, but for now, they just want to put in a modular structure that looks kind of nice to bring back their middle school students. Um, and then also we got a really lovely, and I learned a lot from, presentation from the Environmental Services Division in the county about the Drainage Infrastructure Management, which is a lot of what informed my comments earlier. Um, and really just how, uh, quite recently we've, as a county, been maintaining public stormwater infrastructure and even just assessing what we've got and taking inventory. It's only been eighteen months that we've actually even looked to see what we even have in the urban area. So, um, I was glad to learn about it and can share more if you want to know. Uh, although the panel, oh, the, uh, the deck is online if you want to review it.
Great. Thank you. You know, one of the things I think bears conversation at some future point is I found out a while back that the people when, that are doing the site plan process and they're saying like, there's, here's where the stormwater retention basin is going to go and all the stormwater facilities are different than the people in the county that then maintain those stormwater, that inspect and keep those compliant after the fact. And I, yeah, you, you get it. Um, I think it would make a lot more sense for those two groups of people to be more in alignment. Um, but you know, obviously we don't make staffing decisions, but I'll just throw it out there. It's a point of efficiency. There's the, you know, you have two different, two very different groups of people that are making those decisions. Thank you. Any other C I C? Reports or committee reports? No?
I, I don't have a C I C. I have a different one. Go ahead. I have to
I don't have C I C either.
Oh, we just, I, I don't believe I reported on this yet. We had a, a public meeting about the solar facility on the farm at Secretary Sands. Most, mostly the presentation by the applicant consisted of showing multiple views from different sightlines and talking about how far away you might potentially be able to see the solar panels. I know one concern that was brought up was the reflection of solar panels, but they talked about the fact that they're mostly black. Because if you think about it, the solar panel is reflecting the sun, then it's not absorbing the solar energy. So by definition, they shouldn't really be reflecting a lot. Um, but, uh, anyway, it was really just a, a lot of Q and A. We'd, you know, we're still waiting to get that application here. So it's a pretty small facility. It's, it's just over thirty acres of disturbance. Uh, it is an existing forested site and it is on a hill. Now it's a forest plantation site, so pine plantation. Uh, the soil looks like it's in pretty good shape, but um, anyway, it's, it's a bit controversial because of the potential sightlines from the neighbors. Because it's on a hill, unlike some of the other sites that we've approved where they're much harder to see because they were down or tucked away. So it's still to be determined, still to come to us. I don't, I don't have a date for that one. I haven't seen it in the schedule yet.
About to ask that.
Yeah, not yet.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Karazan?
Uh, there was a M P O tech, um, last week. Uh, smart scale was the focus, uh, a lot of discussion around the barracks road improvements on the, uh, the, by the bypass.
Hmm.
And so the main concern with the M P O tech was not providing a mid, um, mid-block cross, crosswalk, particularly where you have the, the, um, you have a, you have a, a bus stop on one end and you have the trail on the other end. And there's no crosswalk. And a lot of people cross there today. They're narrowing the streets with the, with the improvements, which means people are probably gonna want to cross even more so. And there's, you know, there's no, there's no area of, of, um, what do they call it? Not, not rest, but the area of, uh,
Destined refuge.
Refuge, kind of with an R. Yeah. So anyway, there, there was a lot of conversation about that and, and, and that we were pressured to approve it. It was approved with a condition, sort of, I mean, it was, it, it couldn't be in a, a formal condition, but at least we voiced a concern that V dot should should look at, uh, as they design it and, and they go further into the design to incorporate a crosswalk and mid, mid-block uh, crossing. So, um, there was a lot of conversation over that.
Are, are they going to extend the, the left turn lane as you're coming from Charlottesville and getting on the bypass? Because that's always seemed like a bottleneck right there.
So are they going to extend the left turn lane?
No, no, when you're coming
You're saying on, on the, on the exit ramp?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Let's see if I
I don't believe
I think, I think, Mr. Murray, you were saying if you are northbound on the bypass and trying to get off that exit ramp there or which left lane you
No, you're on Barracks Road. You're coming from Charlottesville, um, along Barracks Road, and then you're, you're going to turn left to get onto the bypass.
In front of the Exxon station there.
Right, the Exxon.
No, that's not thinking
On the other side of the underpass, on the other side of the old pass.
On, on the city side of the underpass.
No, the county side. It used to be a daycare center. And so you can make a left-hand turn, go up and then go south. And I think it would be easy. This is not on the Exxon side. This is on the other, on the, going under the end. Turn so that you go
Pull your microphone down.
Oh, yeah, I, I think maybe I'm understanding that if I'm leaving Charlottesville, I've gone past the Exxon station and I want to take a left to go onto the bypass, is that what we're talking about?
Correct, to go south.
So in theory, there'll be two roundabouts that will accommodate that.
Oh, good.
Turning movement there. The way the funding has worked, sorry to steal your thunder. No. The way that, there's, there's actually two applications that are in process there. One of them is the county is doing sort of like half the project. Sort of roundabout at, uh, Georgetown, plus the shared use pass and the road dieting coming back to the bypass. So if that passes, great, but you know, the real aim is to try and get the whole thing done and the whole project. That's what the M P O is applying for. So if the M P O doesn't get the whole project, it'll be a much smaller project in the subsequent years and try and get the rest of the project. So hopefully we'll end up with the M P O being funded. There'll be a roundabout at Georgetown and two roundabouts at the bypass. And, and at that point, you won't have, um, turn lanes because you'll be using the roundabout for the turning movements.
Yeah, that, it, it's, it's quite the, uh, improvements that they're proposing. That's going to it's going to be multi, multi-phase. We're just trying to get this crosswalk as we, I mean, from a pedestrian standpoint, I think it's going to be daunting.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Um, um, yeah, the, the crosswalk would be a, a great addition that hopefully V dot will consider.
It's been tough, it's been tough to get V dot to, to, um, even in the best scenarios, to support a mid-block crossing and in one where we're reducing the median like that, it's going to be that much tougher.
Yeah, no, we get it. It's just that people use it today.
I don't, I don't, it's, it's, don't deny you on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I used to use it myself, Wack, and I used to live in the apartments that used to be called Old Salem, and I used to cross there all the time because of the trail.
Yeah, and there was some discussion about the fifth street, uh, improvements as well, uh, the fifth street and, and, um, sixty-four. Um, and I think that's, the, the verging diamond is, is kind of the preferred option there that's moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Any other reports of any kind? All right. Uh, review of Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Barnes?
Uh, yes, the board met on the fifteenth of this month. Uh, the two items that previously come for you were a reserving and a special use permit for the Stonefield Tesla. And those were both approved by the board.
Awesome. Thank you. Same way. Good. AC forty-four?
Just steal your thunder again. Um, again, we'll be back with a presentation for that next, uh, at our next meeting. The next meeting. Yeah, gently, generally speaking, as, um, you know, staff sort of gotten into the taking collection of all of the goals and objectives that we had brought to you all, I think there's a need on our, that we're seeing is a sort of a, there's lots of details with that of goals and objectives, um, kind of, uh, you know, that's many, many different ideas. There's sort of a need to create a companion document at the beginning of it that sort of really spells out sort of the larger goals and visions of the, the uh, the county. And that's something that we're working on. That's what's sort of delayed us from taking a little bit different directions. So we're going to come back and explain that direction that we're taking to you all for your consideration at, uh, at our meeting next month, the eleventh.
Got it. So when you look at the, not on the schedule, but there's a work session on the twenty ninth, sorry, twenty fifth. This, this is not, you're not talking about the work session, right? You're talking about just a conversation, just an update. Yeah, up to you.
It's going to be on the eleven. This is something
June, June eleventh is when it will be.
Is it, is it a work session?
It'll just be an informational item that we'll have before
Different than June twenty
We'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be here starting at six o'clock on, on the eleventh.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, okay. Any new business?
Chair had a, I do have a question regarding like training for planning commissioners. I know it's usually held annually. I was looking frantically online to see when that next one was offered. So I was curious. Is, do you all know if there's any plan to send commissioners to such a training and you get, you need time to look it up. It's totally fine. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Yes. Definitely get into that and get back to you. Question. All right. Any old business or items for follow-up? All right. I will adjourn us then till June eleventh. Thank you, everybody.
Well done.